Oliver and I are going to here, we did not have that forum.
No.
So, we're going to be Mr. Williams to be here and also Mr. Ellis. We have that, like recognize our again for today for the workshop session of Kristi Cable. And Pronda here as well, so, and they had some difficulty with their equipment from the projections, I think. So, we're going to be this board looking at a presentation on local special Olympics. And we heard a bit about this last meeting we had, and we're actually seeing this part here today. So, maybe if you'd like to come borrow, we'll go to work. Welcome, yeah.
Before I get started, there's mention in this video about Project Unified. I'm going to clarify what that is before you'll know. And the way that it's set up is, the first part of it talks about our local games that we're going to try. And then the second part is our state games. But our school, each school, the elementary mill and the high school is a project unified school. And Northern High State Special Olympics has an initiative where, and it's grant, it's a huge grant, funding schools across the state to try to unite students with intellectual disabilities with students without. And I was just going to briefly tell you what it is. It's about creating sustained relationships, a commitment to bring youth with and without intellectual disabilities together through programs that allow you to form lasting relationships and friendships. And the whole mission for that program is to promote school communities where all young people are agents of change, fostering acceptance, respect, dignity, and advocacy for people with intellectual disabilities and therefore anyone who's perceived as different. And you will notice in this, there's mention of Project Unified students. They are the students through that particular grant that were able to go with us to state games. And when they got there, they were positioned all over those state games volunteering, not with our, just our county, but across with all the state schools. So, I just wanted to clarify that before we got started. Just have an idea of what is recurring. County this year, Grand County for two years.
Thank you so much for showing us that.
No, thank you.
Very familiar.
Appreciate it.
Thank you so much for being present.
Great.
Okay, do we have the other public comment here about during this workshop session? Okay. We need to have some conversation, I guess we can, I don't know if we've already done this morning. We need to have some discussion amongst ourselves on that. Beth, are you here for regular session?
Yeah.
Okay, alright, we're going to do this then. This morning, I received an email from manager Cable. We have had a circumstance jump up that were not very much required at all. And this is having to deal with the PILT. And PILT, to remind everybody that is here, you may already know, has to do with the payment in lieu of taxes. It had been shared with the public and of course with this board previously that we were looking at anticipating a 5.1% cut in the PILT funds. And to give you some idea, what we were looking at was in the budget, it's around $235,000. And the PILT money is of those that are predicated on the lands in the county that are owned by the federal government. And that's what it means, they pay a payment in lieu of taxes. Forest Service owns 113,000 acres in Grand County. And we're being paid about $2.54 an acre on it for tax money. And we were anticipating getting about the $235,000 again issued. Cable borrowed and linked to the Department of Interior who is responsible for these funds. And it's first one of the funds in the states, then the states and the counties. And we find out that Grand County is going to be facing approximately 71.6% reduction in PILT payments. So, that's 100, what, how many, 100?
167,000.
176, is that right?
167.
167, so that's $167,000 that this board has got to try and find to fill in the holes in the budget that we previously figured out. Only thing we're able to find out, and I have a contact with the National Association of Counties. And I called him this morning asking to see why, why, and why does this happen? And it was back in 2008. City Board at that time had made a decision between timber monies and PILTS, is that right? Going with the?
Secureable schools.
Yes, Secureable Schools Program in 2008, they had a decision to do that. And the disbursement of those Secureable Schools monies comes from them timber sales. And if any of y'all from even thinking timber sales, they're becoming less and less and less. And this county at that time opted to go with the timber sales. And what we're understanding has happened, they went through a reauthorization last year for the PILT payments. So, they're always, they're still in question whether you're going to continue doing them or not. And the way that it works is, is of the $235,000 that is computed using the formula of $2.54 an acre for 130,000 acres, comes that 235, but then the government, all their great wisdom, decided that if you receive timber sales money, you're going to take the timber sales money off of that amount. This has just come to the knowledge of this board this morning. And we're going to face a challenge of trying to, and then sort of have a balanced budget. So, having said that, I know that this budget, as a post meeting tonight, our board is not going to be with going to be able to pass a budget tonight, that we're going to have to go back and start looking for more money and more ways to cut what we've already cut to the bone. And it's a tormenting thing to have to find $167,000 when you've already gone it down to the bone and some cases down to the marrow. So, we're going to be facing that, and we're going to have to have a more discussion about it. It's board meeting to do this. So, I just wanted that to be out there, and I know we'll be mentioning it again, regular session by the clock. But that's the challenge that this board is going to face.
How much was the timber sale like?
It's 100, you said it? Off the top of my head Doug, I want to say that the timber sales is around 270. And?
County get up there?
Well, the issue of the timber sales, 80% of that goes to school, 20% to our volunteer, like our rescue squads. In the past, whenever this came about, it's my understanding, and from what I can tell from the numbers, is that the Department of Interior did not apply the full formula to the payments that the county received. I've been on the phone all day long, and most of this afternoon, with other counties in our area and with Department of Interior, looking into this and how they're finding start calculating these payments. Other counties around us, Macon County got their funding cut about a half. They weren't even aware of this until I called.
Well, is this, is this coming from the federal, or is the federal giving to the state and the state decided?
The state is providing the amounts of timber receipts that the Forest Service has got to come from the Department of Revenue and the state. So, we're going to be reaching out to the state to make sure that their numbers are correct, number one. And then, as they pass it along with the federal government, they have just now started, and I can inform them, for calculating its payments. And there was no prior indication that, there was no anticipation that they were going to be cutting either.
Is federal, federal bill, are they just giving so much per acre to the state, or them to?
No, sir, I see where your question is. In regards to lands with, say, US Forest Service, that comes straight from the federal government. With the PILT comes straight from the federal government. Now, in some aspects of PILT, say, for instance, TBA, that, those, that PILT money is calculated off of power sales, not generation, otherwise we'd see a larger amount of money from that. Now, that money is sent to the state of North Carolina, and then it's digged up amongst the counties. But on the land side of Department of Interior lands, whether it be National Park Service, Forest Engineers, Army bases, things like that, US Forest Service probably, that comes straight from the federal government.
Doug, on the amount of money that the US Forest Service are paying Grand County, if me and you own a piece of land that's hanging up that the goat can't walk on, the least that's in Grand County is $2,500 an acre. The amount of money that the Forest Service is paying for the amount of land they own in Grand County, it boils down to $2.48 translated into American dollars.
And if you calculate in the reduction of any timber receipts, based on this formula?
County has land with a little cell of timber, that needs to be, that needs to be on.
If you take the formula that they're using this right here, we're getting paid just a little under 60 cents an acre.
And, and, and the way I look at it, the landowners in Grand County are keeping the Forest Service at Wofootville for the Forest Service to supply.
Yeah, you need to go ahead and elaborate on that, you know, services and, you know, there are members of this board that are probably making more sense of it than I can, but it's like Doug, the, you know, the disposal of trash. You know, they go around to their campsites and they pick up the trash, where are they going to take it? And, you know, and that really sounds, you know, petty, but it's not. It runs into an amount of money, and to say that we're going to recoup that, you know, at 60 cents an acre, you know, I don't hardly see that it's fair. And what we're going to have to do is board to have another hard look at that, because there is a distinct possibility that they're going to make you just do away with PILT. And, and you say, well, that's a big deal, that's just 235,000.
Well, if they like to do away with Grand County?
Well, you know, I, that's, you know, you're getting that feeling, and I hear you, I hear you loud and clear. It's, it's not very friendly. Yes, ma'am?
If, if they're going to possibly do away with PILT, and we're already getting timber sales into the county, would it not behoove us then to be a little bit more active in the Forest Service revision planning right now that's dealing with all this stuff, and see if we can't, you know, I don't, you know, I don't know how, I was, you know, see, argue for getting more timber land to work on?
Well, we, we are very active in the revision program that's going on at the Forest Service right now. The, every year, the Secure Rural Schools, which is the funding element, authorizing those timber receipts to come to our schools, to volunteer fire departments, has to be reauthorized. So, literally, it's on the chopping block every year. There's no guarantees for any of this funding, year after year. And budgetary, for those reasons, it makes it very difficult for us to try to plan ahead to see what monies we're going to have to come in. Because the $67,000 that they're saying are given to Grand County, that's for fiscal year 2013. That's, that's the year we're in. Next year, I don't know what that's going to be. There's, you know, we were anticipating $223,000?
Can you tell if they're registered?
I am.
Haggins or Haggins?
I am, first thing this morning, I contacted Congressman Matta's office and Senator Kay Haggen's office. And they are actively looking into this. And actually, I'll be meeting with the chief of staff for Congressman Matta's office on Wednesday.
One of the things too, you know, you're missing, you're talking about talking to the folks that you try to get their ear on, and basically what it boils down to are the folks in, in conference. And I, I did, I sit on, I sit on that board for public lands and the National Association of Counties. And I was actually, had opportunity to go to Washington a lot, and visited like 80 different representatives on this very issue. And it was looking very iffy then, but what happened with that when the reauthorization happened? And this is all a conjecture, this is just a wild guess. Is it somewhere in that reauthorization bill? You see, what looked through my mind is, you know, well, this is not normal. This all of a sudden, this money is just being taken away, you know, this new formula, where did it come from? And the only place that it could have happened was that it ended up being a rider on the reauthorization bill. And not saying anything to anybody about it? So, you know, about timber receipts and opening up timber, I heard talk, this was a year ago September, they were talking about reauthorization about the issue of timber rights. And there's a big push, there's people that says, yes, the Forest Service needs to be reorganized, it needs to be more consumer friendly, you know, they do need to, you know, take out contracts for anything that they're going to do, do it with the local economy, instead of going somewhere and having somebody on a national level to come in and blow trees up, or whatever they got to do. And there's ways to do it, to manage your forests in a lot better way, but it's going to take a total revamp of the Forest Service, and I just don't think that Little Grand County is going to be able to do that. But I've heard it from the folks in our community that are loggers, it's almost non-existent. It's all building, you know, usually here, industry here in our county. It's just succulent tremendously, and you, and you talk to your representatives, and, and it's kind of like that this has become a monster that it's been created, you can't stop it, you know, it just keeps corroding on its own. So, we have to come to some terms with it, but we're, we're here now, and we thought we just about had this budget for this year in a manageable state, cutting it to where it needs to be, and trying to move forward. But now, we, we're confronted with this. And we are, we are having to look at what, what are we going to do, what do we have to do? We have to have a balanced budget by law, we have to have a budget that balances out. We can't go into that fiscal year with $167,000 debts. So, it behooves us, you know, about where, where do you do this? So, it's not been a pleasant day. So, we're, we're, we're going to work on this, do the best we possibly can. But it gets a little old when you're having to cover payment for decisions made in places where you have no, any say. So, that, that's basically where we're at.
Well, if it's offered from Ainsault and Atlanta, are they, if you contact them, are they going to get, try to get more money this way, or are they, is it?
Are you talking about the Congress?
No, for the Forest Service.
For the Forest Service? I have not made contact with the Forest Service as of yet individually, because all the numbers and figures came out of Department of Interior, which is the, you know, branch of federal government that oversees the US Forest Service. That's where, I was on a phone conference with the manager of Macon County, Jack Porter, with, with Department of Interior. And he was laying out the, how he computed these payments this year. And, you know, our, our question was, well, I understand your formula, but why have, why are you all of a sudden using, you know, this, this formula that we've never dealt with?
It seemed like it, it's, my answer was always screwing, stringing it, or whip it far to the state of way. Or so, but that's right.
And it, it, it matters, the way they're huge distribution of this, of the money from the Forest Service. Take the school gun, X number of dollars this year from timber sales. And personally, I know from second year, Forest Service ain't bought enough timber from Grand County last year to make a good decent box of toothpaste. Now, where did the money come from? They pulled from one pot and went in another. Distributed out, sure we give X number of dollars to PILT, we give timber sales. They didn't get enough timber sales because of the timber.
And that, that's the issue that we're dealing with at hand, is the fact that they pay us so little in PILT. And then they turn around and decide to get the money back off of timber sales. Is what it boils down to.
I mean, really, all it boils down to is, there's $235,000 coming this way on the PILT payment. And then there was that in the small, in the secure rural. They overhear, so they decided, you know, well, you know, it's all federal dollars. So, what we'll do is, is we'll have this PILT up here, which will be computed. But then they'll say, well, we're just going to go ahead and take this away that we've already given. So, that's put us in this very place. It's the same thing that happened, and I keep going back to this, and when I was with the public school system here in Grand County, you know, about the sales tax, sales tax comes back to public, public schools, we pay that? Well, state of North Carolina, this one fiscal year owed the school systems in state of North Carolina $54 million. And there was a few, or, this General Assembly said, well, we're not going to send it back. We're not going to send $54 million back to schools. And there was such a, you know, a few or about it, and they said, well, what have to do? Not very popular decision, not good. So, they sent the $54 million back to all the school systems. But every one of those, a portion of checks that came to the school systems, including Grand County, also came with a letter enclosed saying that here's what you have to go and send back. We're going to leave it up to you locally about how you're going to find that money. So, Grand County got $23,000 back, sales tax, they're telling you, you're going to have to find $23,000 provisions to send back to law. So, they met the letter of law. They met the letter of the law, sending back the $54 million, but then they did an agency regulation that ended up saying, you send back this amount, and they knew it's going to come with $23,000.
The crowd we got down here now, it's going to better hang on, I mean, county, the small county is going to get paid.
Well, you see, we, we have been watching bill diligently, best we can, is that this year right here is tough. Next year is just going to be almost unbearable. It is going to get worse. We thought that, you know, this fiscal year, you know, would be kind of a transition where we could plan ahead, try to absorb some of the punch, but it's already here now.
Well, you still, you don't have to put more and more in these school systems over the next year.
Right.
State is pulling it out.
That's right. Include school licenses.
Better hang on me property debt, I mean, you know, your yield rate is going to be going up.
And I wondered, how do you, what else do you do?
Raise property debt, that's one thing, maybe never end up.
Yeah, wait, 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 now there are no, they're bleeding, they're talking back, they can't afford more.
I mean, we can't start talking in terms of doing away with the ambulance system. We can't talk in terms of doing away with law enforcement. We can't talk in terms of doing away with social services. We can't talk in terms of doing away with the health department.
When you pull it all around your box, when you, when you, I think, see, not many people thinks like that. You've got this pot of money here coming in. You've got this pot of money going out. This is smaller than the ones going out. Sooner or later, it's going to get, and it's hungry. And when it catches you, what do you do?
Yes, for purchase.
Yeah, when it catches you, what do you do?
Raise tax.
Well, you know, we looked at that, looked at our option. We had, we had entertained this year, trying to put in place a, bringing up county employees to have a, a living wage. So, there that is, it's hanging in the balances, you know, it's just coming to here, we'll be able to go and restart the process. So, you know, we heard that mentioned. Then you hear about going to the various departments, saying to them, well, you're going to have to come up with X number of percent to cut that off. We've, we've, we've gone through this already, and I just don't know anywhere else to go. And I listen clearly to what the taxpayer says, you know, what do you get from taxed dollars? And you realize that, you know, you continue, continue in one of these seats, and you're, you're working with it every day. You really have to understand about trying to keep those services employed. And the health services, it's everything we can do to try and keep that in line as best we can. And everything is just one thing after another, so. But, you know, I don't want to sit here and be confused about it, we have to do it. You know, the old saying is, you know, we got the advantage on it, and that's because we have to do it. There's just no way around it. So, this board will have to make some very, very difficult decisions. So, that's where we're at, with that, that particular meeting, so.
Well, while you're going to ever, you know, on this school with the health thing, and they be talking about the roads, not main name roads, I can kind of do that. I agree with County Board, the main name road.
Cannot, and, and the North Carolina Association of County Teachers, which I've been fortunate enough to be a part of, you know, they're the ones that are walking holly and wrong, trying to, one of the budgets, they call it, try and fly around and somehow get somebody's ear, because, you know, they're talking about the issue of school buses, you know, they're going to, and I told you, I'm a school bus boss, one school bus can, eighty seven, eighty seven thousand dollars for school buses. And I, you know, and you just keep wanting, you, you hold your breath, you know, it's like the unemployed. You know, they borrowed money from the federal government, paid the unemployment insurance for state of North Carolina. You know where they handed it off to? They handed it to us.
They threw you?
No, they're not. And what I'm saying is, this is.
And, and the sale part is, is the few, the big cities, the bigger cities is the ones that are a little bit.
Yeah.
And the small counties are, I mean, they're.
What was it, 48 counties? Ronnie Bill's vote. Forty-eight counties have all decided votes for every bill legislation that comes to the General Assembly. Forty-eight of the 100 counties in North Carolina, they have a vote. The other 55 are better for classes. So. And we went and increased the fees. We've had to go the route of having to go into the interim for unpaid taxes. We turn the river off, turn it. But, we're going to have, we're going to, we're going to do it, one way or the other, we have to have no. But I want, I want, I just want the public to understand, as many as can understand, is that there's very difficult decisions to make. But I think you understand, I don't want to raise me up personally, and we're upset, I don't want to raise the mill rate.
You don't get enough fees in this county, Matt, and others?
No, it doesn't.
It kind of right now, put it down, the end of you guys is.
No worries.
What's the equivalent, I mean, what's the equivalent of raising that? And what would you have to raise it to, how many mill rates would you have to raise it to, to cover the short term?
Right now, maybe some of the budget that we have, one mill is $120,000.
We have two.
And you're right.
Where are you down to, Brad?
Yeah, we went to, we went to 46 to.
You're talking about you don't have to go to more?
Well, I don't know, you see, I don't want to, but the thing is, is that they have what they call revenue neutral. We're still a point under revenue neutral. That means, revenue neutral means that you bring in what it takes from the services. And you say, well, how do you do it? But we've accomplished that in this budget, that we're still one mill under neutral. So, if it works that way, and you want to raise that up, and you're right, you know, that, and just to sit here and say, yeah, let's just go ahead and jack up the mill rate, that's not an easy decision, it's just not. not an easy decision, it's just not. All right?
Oh, all right.
Fine. But...
Before this decision, I'm just trying to understand, before this issue came up today, you had the board had already noted to raise the mill rate to...
Yes, went from forty to forty-six, that's what's proposed. And we're supposed to vote on it tonight, we're going to be, we're here, near the end of voting on the budget tonight because of this one hundred and sixty-seven thousand dollars.
So you got to be campaigning or you, I mean, so if they can work that out, they ready for you now.
I hope.
See, I better be praying, however.
I hope. And they have, they have, they have turned around everything that they can to try and find it and we're going to be having further conversations about it at this board. And, yeah, we do, we leave heavily on it for decisions, about what we can and can't do. Have any other ideas?
What about the unemployment rates that the, the state is now charging you? I mean, I know you can't go out and make people go to work, but I happen to know that very people go in there, whatever the requirement is, over and over again, say, oh, yeah, I've looked for a job, oh, yeah, I've looked for a job, oh, yeah, I've looked for a job. I mean, is there anything, I don't have any clue, you know, I mean, but is there anything that can be done to strengthen that? I mean, so people, I, I, my personal belief, and I have friends on all sides of tracks, that, that there's a lot of people abusing that particular, and if we're now paying for that, is that not an area that you can kind of try to toughen up to? I don't, I don't know, but...
Well, you see, that, that comes again to what Doug was alluding to about, you know, the state and federal government handing down these mandates and, you know, and saying to us, what was it on our budget this year, fifty-four thousand on the insurance, unemployment insurance?
The unemployment was around thirty-five, forty...
Thirty-five, thirty-five, forty thousand dollars.
The balance was changing the health insurance.
Yeah.
Issue of health insurance.
So they handed that expense down to the counties to pay it and they say, well, you're going to pay this back and I don't know how many be, as many as dollars it was, but the state borrowed the money from the federal government to extend unemployment periods during that rough patch and the state, it seemed like it was ever, and then to go and balance the budget at the state level, they go and hand it out to us.
But we thought it was awful the way they used to do it because they didn't charge us anything like, like they did, like they're doing now unless somebody was laid off. We had to pay a hundred and ten percent, they dropped four hundred dollars a month, we had to give unemployment four hundred and forty. But, see, they, if they wouldn't have laid off, they wouldn't have made nothing, but now, the way it is, they're going to be getting money whether anybody's laid off or not, or before they did. Right, man?
Exactly right.
So they, they, they make it forty dollars more, not worth it, is that right? Four hundred dollars?
Yeah, they leave four hundred dollars, you're all four hundred dollars.
Then we would have paid four hundred and forty dollars back to the state.
Probably three thousand.
But we didn't pay it if we didn't lay it off.
We didn't lay it off.
Now we pay it just because they're in forty each.
But we had already paid.
Exactly. I mean, because we're paying it, we have claims.
We had already paid the forty dollars, now they're handing down some other calculated number.
And we had, we didn't pay unless somebody was laid off, right? We didn't pay the interest of more than twelve hundred dollars unless they were laid off. And that's probably forty-five, twenty, twenty-five thousand a year, maybe.
It depends, you know, before the economy went and we had the, we, I mean, we were depending on the turnover, you know, because for a long, long time, the only kind of time you could draw would be if you quit or, and, and, if you were laid off from like at work. But then the state went through this period of, well, I mean, you could draw if you quit for, and, and you go through adjudication and the state would determine whether you quit under your own steam or, or had some level of duress or whatever, so a lot of times people would be drawn unemployment where under the old system they would never draw. So they really loosened it up. So, you know, since I've been here, it's, it's hovered anywhere between seventy-five and ninety-five thousand dollars a year to cover unemployment for the county. We're still going to have that, it's going to be about ninety-eight thousand this coming budget year plus the thirty-five thousand of the surtax, okay, which we had never had to add that in before. So we just get hammered and we ignore it.
Well, and the microeconomic is a while back, they're paying, you know, the, the state is overhauling the unemployment insurance system because they were paying prisoners and other folks that, you know, are clearly unemployed because of...
Exactly.
There's a lot of ways.
Very interesting.
Common sense, solutions for common sense. Well, that, that's where that is and we, we will, we will address it, we have to, we can't go in without balance, but I've made this decision between now and July one, it's late today, we have to try and, try and work out something to balance one hundred and sixty-seven thousand, thereabouts, dollars in our budget, so we'll, we'll leave it at that. If there's not anything else, then we need to go again and take a short recess and we'll start back down to five o'clock. But let your neighbors know, this is where it's at, this board's going to try and do what it can. Doug, your solution's there, no, it isn't, I don't know. You want to go there, sometimes you get an awkward solution, Doug.
Raise tax.
Or cut, or cut, cut.
One way or the other.
Let's see, it breaks down. That's it. That's it. All right, we'll take a short recess and then we'll go from there.